Thank you. This emergency meeting of the Township Council is called to order. Madam Clerk.
In accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act of the state of New Jersey, notice of this emergency meeting of the Franklin Township Council was made by the posting on the bulletin board, posted on the township's website electronically transmitted to the officially designated newspapers, indicating that this emergency meeting would take place via WebEx at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, December 28th, 2021.
Okay, if we could have the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman Emerson?
Here.
Councilman Chase?
Here.
Councilwoman Francois?
Here.
Mayor Kramer?
Here.
Councilman Oni Jaka?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Pruitt?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Houdin?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Vasconella?
Here.
Councilman Wright?
Okay. So the first item of consequence on the agenda is the emergency meeting resolution. Uh, this is Resolution 21417, providing for an emergency meeting of the Township Council of the Township of Franklin Somerset County in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 10-9. And, uh, the, uh, it's presented to the Township Council for adoption. In order to have this meeting, we need 75% of those attending, um, to vote for the meeting. The reason is because this is an emergency meeting that's being held in less than 48 hours. Do you want to make any comments about that, Mr. Attorney, or is that sufficient? You're muted. You're muted, Mr. Attorney.
Actually, we need 75% of nine, so we need seven votes.
Okay. So do we have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Emerson?
Yes.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pruitt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Houdin?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Vasconella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
Okay, so we had eight. So the, um, we are having the meeting. Let me, um, talk about why we're having the meeting. Uh, that was somewhat spelled out in that resolution and the whereas's. But basically, I think, um, I think people deserve to hear what the thought process was behind this. Um, I'd actually been thinking about, and Councilman Emerson had been thinking about, whether we should do a mask mandate or not. Uh, various mayors, uh, and councils around the state had been doing them. And, um, uh, he contacted me and I was thinking about it. Uh, the county took off several days, um, of reporting our, uh, numbers to us. And then on Monday, they reported for the prior four days, 423 cases. So over, an average of over 100 cases a day. Just for, uh, perspective, um, we were averaging, um, you know, typically at that time, maybe 30 cases a day. Highest we've had before was in the low 70s. And so this was an extraordinary number. Franklin's seven-day average on December 1st was 12. The seven-day average on December 28th was 73. The five-day average on December 28th is 97. The reason I do two different averages for today is it's showing that it's accelerating. Since Christmas, um, there's roughly been 100 cases a day on average. The New Jersey hospitals on December 1st had 1,055, uh, patients. On December 27th, they had 2,979, a 2.8 twald increase. The original virus had an R zero, which is a measure of how much it's infective. In other words, if the R zero is one, that means for every person that gets infected, they tend to infect one other person. Numbers greater than one, you have, the virus grows. If it's, uh, less than one, then the virus tends to go away. So the original virus had an R zero of 2.5. Delta was just under seven, and Omicron is believed to be 10. Uh, in the United Kingdom, on December 17th, it was estimated that Omicron was doubling every two to three days. And I cite, uh, the United Kingdom because, um, they, um, have had, uh, a lot of experience with this. Right, they're ahead of us on this. Um, I don't mean ahead of us in their thinking necessarily. I mean ahead of us as far as getting the infection, uh, in their population. The, um, the United Kingdom's version of the CDC, uh, the UK HSA, uh, has suggested that protection against symptomatic disease at 25 weeks after two doses of the COVID vaccine could be less than 10% for the Omicron variant as compared to 40% for the Delta variant. Delta, when Delta's first hit us, it went from being first noticed to dominant. It took three months for that to happen. Omicron has already done that in our region, and it did it in three weeks. So these were the things that were on my mind when I came to the point that we needed to do something about it and needed to call in a meeting, uh, emergently. So we're on now to public discussion. Do we have a motion to open to the public?
Moved. So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. We're now open to the public. Three minutes, no yielding of time. State your name and address, may only speak once. Mr. McQueen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anybody from the public wishing to speak, we ask to use the chat function, raise hand feature, or star 3 from your telephone. Again, anybody from the public wishing to speak, we ask that you use the chat function, raise hand feature, or star 3 from your telephone. Mr. Mayor, I do not see anybody indicating they would like to speak at this time. Hold on. Yep. Just a reminder, the chat function is not monitored. You need to use the chat function raising feature to speak.
So again, the, the indications are very dark. I see Leah Convery.
Okay, I have, uh, Michelle Peterson unmuted at this time.
Okay.
You guys can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Michelle Peterson, 66 Wilson Road, Somerset. Um, I just wanted to make a few quick comments about masks. First, I wanted to acknowledge that there are plenty of experts that advise that we do wear masks. I get that, and I'm sure that every member of the council has done their research on whether or not they work, um, and if they can protect folks from COVID. I, I know the mayor just, uh, gave an explanation, uh, a minute ago about what he feels are the dangers of especially this new variant. But, um, if you do a search online about the efficacy of masks, you'll find lots of information, we all know that. I'm sure we've all researched it. Whether or not that information is linked to actual studies, or rather, uh, just opinions is another, is another matter. But because it's always good to look at a subject from all sides, I also hope that the council researches if masks do not work. If that's the case, then you'll likely have read articles published in peer-reviewed medical journals, such as the New England Journal of Medicine, or articles written by Harvard Medical School professors or national experts on respiratory and infectious diseases, or professors of medicine at Stanford, that clearly state through, and again, peer-reviewed research, that masks are often ineffective for stopping the spread of COVID. I know that it's shocking to hear, but it really is true. You're not going to find that information unless you actually look for it. So if anybody on council would like the links to these professional peer-reviewed articles based on research, I'm happy to provide them in an email. People like to comment about following the science, and I'd like to suggest that, um, as scientists by education, epidemiology by education, uh, science has traditionally been defined as the study of the natural world based on observation and actual experiments. And therefore, if there are studies that show information both for and against the wearing of masks, that the council really should consider all of those studies and not just the ones that fit a certain agenda. So, you know, this is just a guess, and it may be unfair on my part, but I'm guessing that nobody's going to ask me for the links to those real, well-researched articles, um, that I just mentioned. But on another note, I'd like to suggest that there is, um, a problem here in town with acquiring COVID testing in a reasonable amount of time. Um, if people could test more effectively and efficiently, perhaps, uh, there would be less of a problem with transmission as well. Uh, for example, residents can't get an appointment for a test, uh, anywhere. CVS, Rite Aid, Walgreens, um, urgent cares. You can't get an, uh, an appointment in any reasonable amount of time because there's just not enough tests or locations available. Uh, that was shown, uh, today in Hillsborough, where people had to wait an hour just to park their cars, and then a total of up to three hours outside in the cold. And I'm guessing that people with achy bodies and fevers can't be expected to wait that long. So I'm wondering if the township leaders can do something about getting ample tests to meet the needs of the residents. Uh, and finally, I have one question about the resolution that was posted, uh, just an hour before the meeting started. Resolution states that masks must be worn in establishment, one in the presence of others within six feet. So if residents are able to maintain six feet of separation, then I'm assuming that they'll not be able to wear a mask, for example, in a grocery store. That's how the resolution's written. I'm not sure if it needs clarification or not. Uh, it looks like every single website online suggests that regular cloth masks do not prevent Omicron. So is the council going to require that you need to wear an N95 mask or a similar high filtration respirator? I mean, that's just clear, that's everywhere, uh, no matter what side you, uh, take on the mask wearing. It looks like cloth masks don't work. So I'm wondering what your requirements would be. And then finally, regarding tonight's emergency meeting, I do understand that the council feels that, uh, the COVID issue is of such an urgency that an emergency meeting need to be called. But to call a meeting and purposely include on your website that written comments can be submitted up till 7:00 PM on December 25th just isn't true, and, you know, it's not cool, actually. You top that off with posting an agenda from December 14th instead of the correct agenda from tonight. That's also wrong. I understand that maybe, uh, someone was sick, not able to, maybe didn't realize the mistakes, but there were quite a few mistakes there, and it kind of just looks like, you know, we're trying to hide something. And, uh, that might also explain why there aren't a lot of people from the public here. So thanks for giving me the time to make my comments, guys.
Thank you for your comments, and you may send me the links if you wish. Mr.
Leah Conway, you are unmuted.
Thank you. Leah Convery, 43 Townsend Court, Franklin Park. I am, I agree with everything Michelle just said. And in addition to that, uh, on the resolution, number three, it says it will stay in, this will remain in effect until it's rescinded by the township manager following 72 hours' notice to the town council or by further resolution by the township council. Can we get a little bit of clarification on that? That's very open-ended, and it's, uh, it's a little bothersome. I mean, this could honestly go on forever, and it's a little unfair. To not, not, not tell us what the parameters are that will make this, uh, be rescinded. So if you could clarify that. I still don't understand the, you have to wear a mask unless you're eating or drinking. Uh, it really kind of doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me as well. Uh, so I don't, I don't think, I think this is, it's coming off as just a, uh, a response, kind of a scared response to, to numbers. And I get it. I mean, I understand. Um, I, I, I also feel that a lot of people who are vaccinated are going back to their unsanitary ways. Uh, not washing their hands as much, not using as much hand sanitizer, uh, being gross. And that's what's spreading it more than, uh, I, I don't know. It seems like that's, that's why it's spreading. Um, I also agree with Michelle about the N95 mask. If you could clarify that. Because I don't have, I, I have, uh, I have a respirator for painting and don't want to go back to wearing that like it was in the very, very beginning of this. They're expensive and not available as readily as whatever. I don't think the cloth ma, cloth masks work as, as well, especially ill-fitting cloth masks. And the last thing I want to see is someone cooking my food who keeps adjusting their face mask. It's disgusting. So, uh, I, I have a problem with the way this is worded. I have a problem with, there's no end to it. I have a problem with that. I found out about this from Michelle about 15 minutes ago. And, and I also tried to get on, uh, I, I was trying to get on my phone because she had the link posted and linked on, on, uh, Facebook. And then I was like, no, I want to do it on my laptop. And oh my God, was it, uh, almost impossible to, to find this meeting and to give, to comment here. So that is a common problem with, with notifications from, from the town council. They're not done in a timely manner. They're, and, and, uh, they're not advertised until like the day of, like, just after midnight, the day of. So the communication here is not great. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Maxine Wells, you are unmuted.
Hi, um, good evening. I just had a question about, um, yeah, just about the mask-wearing in the schools and, you know, the staff staying on top of the kids, um, you know, making sure their masks stay up because the, the numbers in the schools are getting higher and higher. And, um, is there any thought about maybe having the next two weeks off from school? Um, just because, you know, this week has been a mess with the numbers and the testing and all this stuff. And just wondering like what's going to happen, um, next week? When everybody goes back and everybody comes back sick and everybody can't get tested? And it's just going to be a mess. So I just wanted to, to know specifically about the schools. Um, like what's going to happen with the schools? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Sandra Grandfest, you are unmuted.
Okay, I really don't have a lot of evidence one way or the other. But I think that, uh, the mask mandate is be, it's better to have a mask even if it isn't perfect than not to have a mask. So although the comments have been about this being called at the last minute and we don't know all the details, I think we should do whatever we can to, uh, make things a little bit safer. We can work on the other things that have been suggested. But these numbers are just so scary. And for an older person like myself, every bit helps. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Mr. Mayor, I'm just going to go through the list one more time.
I'm looking myself.
Anybody from the public wishing to speak, we ask to use the chat function, raise hand feature, or star 3 from your telephone.
Susan Jordan. Looks like they're unmuted.
Hold on. I don't think they have connected by audio, Susan Jordan. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I don't show them connected by audio.
Okay. I don't, so. I don't see anyone else. Oh, no, there's a phone number, the last phone number.
Hold on. Okay, uh, 609-902, you are unmuted.
Susan, you're up. Oh, hi. Yes, um, I'm calling in favor of the mask mandate, um.
Name and address, please.
Hi. Um, excuse me?
Please state your name and address.
Oh, yes. Susan Jordan, 67 Sunset Avenue.
Thank you.
In Franklin. Um, I'm calling because I am in favor of the mandate. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to log on in the beginning, so I don't know if, you know, you guys had decided on like doing it for a month or two months and revisiting, or, you know, what, how it was decided. But if, maybe that's a suggestion. But yes, I, I personally, uh, have noticed in the past month or so, going into stores and other public places, people are not wearing masks as much as they used to, and they're not as careful. And I think that's partially responsible since Omicron is, you know, really much more contagious. And, uh, I, I think the mandate would be helpful, you know, and I, I, I hope that, you know, you're able to put this in place. Thank you very much.
Okay. Let me just go through it one more time. Mr. Mayor, I do not see anybody else wishing to speak at this time.
I'm scrolling myself. I agree. I see no one else wishing to speak. Counsel?
Close the public session.
Do you have a motion to close the public session?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. I'm looking again. I see nothing. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Public session is closed. So some answers here. Other council members may have, uh, a point of view. Uh, the township attorney and I discussed the section about the 72 hours, the manager being able to decide in the 72-hour, uh, window. Township attorney, could you explain the thinking there?
I think, I think the, the thinking, Mayor, is that at some point in time, the council may determine that it's appropriate for this to, um, sunset. And as the mayor and I discussed earlier today, um, because council only has a, and every, you know, a two, two meetings a month, uh, we wouldn't want to be in a situation where we couldn't react in real time. The reason we put 72 hours notice in there is that if for some chance that the manager should decide that, that the numbers are such that we can lift this, uh, mandate, he would give the council 72 hours so if necessary, they could call a meeting and, and, uh, extend the resolution if they wanted to. So it's just a matter of us being able to be flexible. I think everybody has seen during this pandemic that, you know, as fast as the numbers, um, went up, they could go down, and we're just trying to, you know, make it, um, flexible. And, and I did note to the mayor that because of Franklin's former government, you're seeing a lot of, um, a lot of mayors in, in forms of government in which the mayors issue executive orders, and then when they decide to lift them, they can just lift them without holding a council meeting. So I, we were just trying to build in some flexibility for the chief executive, who is your township manager, um, to, um, to make a decision if, if that, that makes sense. That was the, that was the whole rationale behind it.
And I'll add to that, some people have said, well, what are the parameters by which you will lift the mandate should it pass? I don't, I don't have specific parameters to enforce the mandate. It's kind, it's kind of a, as you, when you see it, you know it. And when it was down to an average of 11 cases a day, I didn't think we needed a mandate. When I, we're cutting 100 cases a day, it seemed pretty obvious to me that we needed to do something. So, um, it may be that we're going to get 100 cases a day, but it's proven, and we may see this, uh, it's proven that, uh, it's very rare that somebody, uh, is harmed by Omicron. And it's just like getting a cold. If that comes out and we're still getting high numbers, then I would, uh, advise council that maybe we can, uh, lift the mandate. So I can't predict what this virus has done. Every time I try to, it throws us a new curve. And I'm, I'm not alone with that. The experts, um, uh, all have trouble predicting it. So I can't predict exactly when there's an end. As far as the schools, we don't control the schools as to what their rules are and when they go back. You should call Mr. Ravalli about that or one of your school board, uh, members. And then the issue, um, Ms. Peterson came up with about the type of mask. The attorney and I discussed that. The problem is, the language is difficult. I agree cloth masks are not very effective. Someone takes a scarf and puts it over their face, it's not very effective. But it was, the language was difficult, um, so we left this. This, um, is basically an adat, adaptation of the executive order from, uh, more, the Morris Town Mayor. So we kind of left it as it is. Those are my comments. Is any, uh, we're not going to have council comments tonight, but if anyone else wants to comment, uh, they're welcome to. Mr. Chase?
Well, listening to Ms. Peterson, my thought was define work. Sure, cloth masks maybe at best are 50% effective in stopping what someone infective is exhaling. And perhaps less than that for somebody else inhaling. But even so, 0.5 times 0.33, oh, you're one-sixth as likely to get infected as if neither you nor the other person, uh, were wearing any sort of a mask. And hopefully, oh, if more effective masks are available, people will get them. But I think of places I've been into where, uh, the people running the store in question, none of them were wearing masks. Incidentally, the store in question was in South Brunswick, not in Franklin. I think, uh, this is the minimum we can do. And we can call on people, if they can get a better mask, uh, they will be better protected and other people will be better protected from them. The big problem is that apparently your maximum, uh, transmission is one day before you have, uh, any symptoms yourself. And the, um, having a case, no worse than a common cold, is for people who are at least fully vaccinated and preferably boosted. There are a lot of people out there, unfortunately, who aren't. People who aren't vaccinated at all. And we're trying to do this to give them a little more protection while telling them, you ought to get vaccinated. I think that summarizes what's available out there.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. You hear me?
Yes, Mr. Wright.
I have a cou, couple of questions about this mask mandate that bothered me. Uh, the first one, we have a mask mandate. How are you going to enforce it? Are you going to say, uh, the police out to catch anyone that doesn't wear a mask? The stores that I go into have that sign, no mask, no service. And I believe any store facility can make up their own rules. I, I don't think it's up to us. I mean, the governor has definitely backed off on that, and our counselor will definitely clue us in if I'm wrong on that. Mr. Braydon, am I wrong on that one? How's that go?
I, I'm not, I'm not quite sure.
I, I'm not, I'm not quite sure I understand your question.
The governor, our governor.
Right.
What's his thing on mask mandates? Where is he at?
Well, I, I mean, there's, there's, there's a whole panoply of governors' orders with regards to mask mandates in public buildings and in schools. And so when you say the governor, I, I, New Jersey has mask mandates in a, in a number of different areas, I believe. So I don't know, I don't, maybe I don't understand the question has backed off on that. I, I'm not sure that that.
If the governor says, and I believe he has, he hasn't come out and, what's that term I'm looking for? There's, as far as I know, that I just read, that he had backed off on mandates to say you positively have to do this. I think that if you want to walk into a store and that store owner wants you to come in without a mask, and he wants to go down that road with you, let him go. Now, um, I'm going to go from the back end of this. I'm a funeral director. And if you don't believe what's going on, then you're foolish. There's twenty-eight thousand dead here in the state of New Jersey. Here in the great state of New Jersey, there's twenty-eight thousand dead because of whatever reason, whatever reason you want to come up with. And whether it's politics that you want to throw out there, uh, whether it's, young lady said it's online and you can find it. Okay, if you can find it, go for it. But I just want to say for us, if you can't put teeth to this, if you can't enforce it, then we're just making a statement about mask mandates. Because I, I, I don't know about how you're going to enforce this deal. Are we just doing it to do it? Or is there some way to enforce this? So can anybody answer that question?
My expectation would be that most stores would follow this instruction. This will give them backup for enforcing a mask mandate in their store. If a store is reported as totally flouting this rule, and people report them to the police, the police can go around and tell them to shut down until at least all store personnel wear masks and all people entering the store are instructed to wear a mask. Now, I'm talking off the top of my head, but I am hoping that most stores will follow this mandate. And that if there are a number who insist on not following it, that we do have ways of enforcing it. It actually might be the county board of health that we would call in to enforce it and be able to shut them down if they don't, don't enforce this rule.
I think the best example we have is what happened at a recent school board meeting, when one of the school board members refused to wear a mask. The police were called and they handled it. I think we have a well-trained police force. And, um, they are able to handle this, Councilwoman.
But Mister Mayor.
Councilwoman.
Isn't that a situation?
Mister, Mister Wright, Councilwoman Pruitt had her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Eric, go right ahead.
Thank you, Councilman, thank you, Mayor. So I, I think I just want to say in the beginning, you know, I support masks, I support getting vaccinated. I support the fact that the only way we get through this is collectively working together. And everyone doing their part to make sure that they're safe and they act responsibly. And that includes wearing a mask and, you know, getting vaccinated if you're able to do so. But I think, you know, when we have these conversations, anytime we talk about doing a mandate, anytime we discuss, you know, the legislative end of things versus the, you know, more enforcement side of things, I think it's really important that we, we also have a conversation internally, and I guess amongst ourselves, kind of what we're doing here informally, is about the consequences of that. So, you know, we're, I, I, I don't think not acting is responsible, right? But it's, it's how we act that that matters. And, you know, my concern is when we start making kind of these enforcements, and, you know, I do not doubt, you know, um, the professionalism of our police. But like when we have these conversations and we talk about introducing them into these matters, you know, I get a little bit concerned because we start potentially having conversations of, you know, people being targeted or overpleased. And, you know, that gives me, I guess, a personal concern coming off of everything we went through earlier last year with like George Floyd and, you know, how we communicate and interact with our police force. So that, that, I'm of one mind with that. And I think anytime a body, you know, moves in this direction, I think we also have to take responsibility of any impact or implications of that, good and bad. I'm not saying that that will happen, but I think we need to take responsibility and understand, you know, the good and the bad. And secondly, I have, you know, I, I support this in the sense that, you know, people haven't been wearing a mask as much as they need to be wearing their mask. I think, you know, this, this has been a very long, long situation that we've been in. Um, and, you know, fatigue is a real thing. You know, folks got vaccinated and, you know, maybe they pulled back on the throttle and, you know, going to stores without masks. There was people who just aren't going to get vaccinated and don't want to wear a mask, and we have that factoring in. So I think it's like when we, if, when we move forward with something like this, I think it's really important that we do have this conversation with the public and with ourselves about how do we do this responsibly and how we do this the best way possible. And like, again, recognizing that the mayor brought up, Mister Mayor, that, you know, we are in a portion or we're with a variant that is completely different than the ones before. It is moving very fast and very aggressively. Um, and it is almost just attacking everybody, right? And obviously, the folks that aren't vaccinated are facing more dire consequences. But, you know, I think, I just want us to kind of continue to have this conversation. I know we don't have all night, but I think it's really important that we talk this out and make sure that, you know, we're moving in a good direction. Not that I doubt, you know, you, Mister Mayor, or Mister Ray Knowen. But, you know, I think we just need to kind of continue this dialogue.
So we're, this is the portion of the meeting where we're answering questions from the public. I think we've kind of moved beyond that. So I think we might as well introduce the ordinance, and then we can have a discussion about the ordinance.
Our resolution, Mayor.
Sorry, thank you, sir. Uh, so Resolution twenty-one four eighteen, uh, imposing a face covering requirement for all establishments open to the public in Franklin Township, Somerset County, is presented to the township council for adoption. Do we have a motion?
The mode.
Second?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Now we can have a discussion about that. So Councilman Wright and Councilman Pruitt have spoken. Does anyone else wish to speak on this?
Mister Mayor?
Councilman, I'm Barrisom.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I just have a quick comment. I just traveled overseas to Chile and came back. The small country, Chile's population of New Jersey, uh, they are ninety-one percent vaccinated. And they highly are sensitive and sensible in terms of everybody complying with national mandates and vaccines and, um, wearing masks and everywhere. You get on a plane, you need, you need to have masks, otherwise you are pulled down from the plane all over any, any, any travel within the U.S. and outside. So coming back, it occurred to me that, um, as elected officials, we should have some responsibility to our citizens. And I think I've heard comments earlier about this being not enforced. And I think that is a very small part of it. And I think, uh, this resolution is, uh, is more of a, um, a strong recommendation and, uh, ability of the, of once individuals being able to comply to the law that we create. And I think it's, it's, it's for the common good. It is not meant to be punitive. Just because it's impossible to police every one of our seventy thousand residents. I think it should not be the, uh, that should not cause us not to enact this sort of resolution and law. I strongly support this, uh, law at this point. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Onijaka. I'm sorry. Um, yeah, Councilman Onijaka, then Deputy Mayor Vasanella.
Okay, okay, Mayor. As I said before, when we look at this, uh, wearing of mask, it's almost compulsory in many companies or many businesses around us. So if we make it compulsory in Franklin, I don't think we're losing much. We are trying to protect our people. That is what we call that. But the only, another aspect is how our police is going to handle it. When they are called in, is it by giving them warning, or them this upon time, then they will handle it in their own professional way, which I think is the way it should go. So I think I'm supporting it. And the other way is how our, our professional, our police is going to handle it if they're called in. So that is what we're going to work out with them. Thank you, Mayor, that is what I have to say.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Vasanella.
Yes, and I appreciate the comments both by the public and by council. I think they, I'm not going to rehash them. I think there's good, uh, very good comments made that we need to digest as part of this process. So moving along with the things that I don't have it seen addressed yet, that I'd like to make part of this discussion before a vote is made and perhaps an amendment, perhaps not. I'm a little concerned about making three and four-year-olds parents, especially going around with whatever children they may have, having three or four-year-olds be part of this mandate. And I kind of sense, I don't want to put words into any councilperson's mouth, speak for them, but I think it is more of a strict recommendation. And I think one councilperson said a statement. But it, obviously, if we put it as a resolution temporary law, we have the teeth to enforce it. So kind of the best of both worlds in a way. But I'm a little, I'm a little concerned about having a two-year-old cut off as opposed to, say, a five-year-old cut off, not trying to nitpick. But as long as we're making a resolution that may stand in place, we don't know how long, and that's the next thing I'd like to address. Because the information is changing rapidly and the statistics are changing, I think we're, I think it should be on us to revisit this, whether it's in four weeks or six weeks or eight weeks. I'm not comfortable with the idea of leaving it open. I think every state of emergency and mandate and executive order had some kind of sunset clause. So I'd be more comfortable if we were forced to readdress this, let the public chime in, readdress this, uh, information. Mayor could bring us medical data he has, et cetera. I, I would be comfortable. I'm not going to make an amendment yet, or a motion for one. I'd like to hear some information, commentary from my colleagues. I don't think it's going to be a perfect resolution. But if we can do something that may, at the end of the day, save a few lives, I think we should make the effort. But I think we should also make the effort to make this as practical and on us, so to speak, as possible. I'm not real comfortable with the clause with the manager. I understand the, 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 what was said about that. I can live with that, so to speak, but I think we need to have a sunset clause that forces us to review this. And again, the age requirement, um, unconscious of. So if any of my colleagues have any concerns over those two issues or any others, I, I would love to hear it. That's, for now, that's all I have to say, Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else who hasn't spoken? So, uh, Mister Manager, did you get my?
Mr. Mayor, I thought you.
I'm sorry. Ms. Ms. Francois, everyone speaks once before anyone speaks twice.
Yeah, I thought you.
Then you can have a bite at the apple again, Mister Wright. Ms. Francois.
Yeah, I thought you were going around to every councilperson. Sorry, Mister Mayor. I just wanted to say, just make a couple of comments quickly. So the, the council sets policy. That's our role and responsibility as a governing body. I believe what we're trying to do here tonight is set policy to protect our residents. The federal health officials and other health officials have set the policies. They want people to get vaccinated, that they want people to get boosted, that they want people to get tested. That's, those are policies that they have set to protect the public at large. And I believe that in terms of enforcement, clearly, no one wants anybody to go to jail. I don't think that we should even be discussing that. So, you know, I'm, I'm really hoping that this is not, we'll never have a conversation in Franklin Township because someone is not wearing a mask and they get arrested. I hope that never happens. And the other thing I wanted to say is that, in terms of the age requirement, I, I, you know, Councilman Deputy Mayor Vasanella, I think you brought up a good point about the age restriction for mask requirements. Maybe two is not the right age requirement. Maybe we should be looking at the five, five years. So maybe we need to, I don't know if we need to sunset that requirement or revise that requirement for age restriction. That's something that I think we need to consider. That's all I have to say, Mister Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else?
If I can, just chime in, I think that the two-year, the, I, I think the two years of age, Mayor, you may know better than I do, is a CDC recommendation?
CDC recommends indoor masking for all individuals two years and older, including students, teachers, staff, and visitors, regardless of vaccination status. So that's.
I, I, I knew that, that, I, when, when these were drafted, I, I thought that that's where it came from. I just wanted to note that.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, CDC. They know the science, thank you.
Anyone else who hasn't spoken?
Hi, Mayor. I would like to say some things.
Councilwoman Udine.
Yes, thank you. Um, I echo Councilman Francois's comments. I think we have been very clear about public safety being very critical to all of us. And, um, you know, it's, it's time that we continue to ensure that we're not just looking for our own selves, but we have to make sure that everyone around us is also safe. So I think having the mask on, um, helps prevent. Obviously, I think we just have to, you know, keep in mind what type of mask we're using. You know, the medical grade is ideal. And we should continue ensuring that, uh, we, we focus on public safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Mister Manager, uh, I think everyone's spoken. So Mister Manager, if you can put up my graphic. So two graphs, those of you who look at my, um, Facebook page, or if you have seen them before. The top one, uh, in blue shows, uh, twenty twenty, and the heavy lines that you see are seven-day averages of cases. The spikes are one-day case numbers. Until this week, the Y-axis went up to seventy. Because of what's happened in the last few days, the Y-axis now goes up to a hundred and sixty. So a lot of what's going on before looks pretty flat. But the big key is what's going on in December of, of this year in red. And it's just leaping off this graph. I think not doing all we can would be an abrogation of our responsibilities. The, um, governor has his own restrictions, his own, he's dealing with the entire state. And I wish him the best of luck. And I wish him the best of luck with that. We have the responsibility of Franklin. We don't know how effective the vaccine is against Omicron. There's a lot we don't know about Omicron. So what we do know is masks work. As Councilman Chase pointed out, they're not perfect. As Ms. Peterson pointed out, they're not perfect. But they do help. And I, I, when I'm at work, I wear it all day long. And I insist that my patients and the people around me wear it. The bottom graph is hospitalizations. And you could see that the very beginning of this crisis back in twenty twenty, we went up to over eight thousand briefly. We had another peak la- last year at about this time. And if you look at what's going on now at the bottom right hand corner of this, you can see we are on a very steep incline of hospitalizations. What did I say? In December? Yeah, we're at a two point eight fold increase in hospitalizations. Now, fortunately, the deaths have not been increasing dramatically. Deaths are lower than at the initial part of the epidemic pandemic. But part of the reason of that is vaccines, but also that we have learned how to social distance and we've learned to use masks. This order, sorry, this resolution is just trying to increase that mask usage to protect people. Okay, thank you, Mr. Manager. You can return the screen. So second bites of the apple.
I'm gonna make a motion, amend a motion to amend. Well, I'm gonna hold off if somebody has, well, let me make the motion and then I guess we can get commentary. Getting back to what our attorney said about the age. CDC recommends a lot of things. We're not making laws. And that's what this is, a temporary law. We're not making laws to enforce a whole long list of CDC recommendations. I'm not suggesting we should. So all due respect, Mr. Rayno, and I don't disagree with what you said, that it's a recommendation. But we got to tailor this for what we believe is right for Franklin. So unless we're going to make this part of this resolution, every single thing now is a requirement that is recommended by the CDC, which is constantly changing and would be impossible anyway. I don't buy the age aspect. We're trying to make this as realistic, both as a strong recommendation, which is also the law, if we pass it. So I'm gonna motion that we change it to five years old and and amend it. And then I also have the concern of the sunset, but since I don't want to confuse this, I will make that motion separately. Trying to make this as plausible and practical as possible that we change the age to five.
So we have a motion to change the wording of the resolution to instead of two years old to five years old. Do we have a second? Hearing no second, the motion dies.
Okay, I would like, I'd like to make another motion that I'm a little flexible if a council person has a different ideas, a timeline. But I would like to have this, I guess, the term would be sunset or expire no later than the second meeting in February. Not that we can't rescind it in other ways by resolution or by the way the manager has the opportunity to, with notice to the council. But at the very least, I'd like us to revisit this and have a healthy public discussion that the public would be aware that we were having a meeting to address this well in advance. We would have the time to research the science, et cetera, whatever it is at that point. And at the very latest, the last meeting in February, which is about two months from now, a little less than two months. So my motion would be for no later than the end of February, if I'm open to other dates.
So if I may reword your motion, that this will be, we add a, we add the clause, this will be revisited at the second meeting in February.
Well, revisited or maybe the attorney could give us some guidance that we would have to, again, as a council, take this step to keep it going. So I don't know if it's just revisit or it would expire and then we would vote to extend it if we wanted to.
So, Mr. Attorney, without taking sides, if you could reword his motion.
Yeah, I think that what you're probably saying depend, you know, you picked the date, but you're saying that the resolution will will terminate, will sunset unless rescinded earlier by the township manager on notice, blah, blah, blah. So I think that that so. So you can pick, you can pick the date, but I think that, I think that Councilman Vasanella has the right idea. It will sunset as of, and you'll have to pick whatever councilman you're making the motion, whatever date you think that's appropriate, which is whether it's the last meeting in in January or some other date. But that's the language I would put in.
So pick the date, Mr. Vasanella, Council, Deputy Mayor.
The date of the second and the two meetings in regular council meetings in February? Or I don't have my calendar in front of me.
I know the second date is the twenty fifth, I believe. Is that correct, Madam Clerk? I believe that's correct.
I don't want a big procedure.
Actually, it would be the twenty second.
Twenty second, twenty second.
I apologize.
I do have a procedural clarification question, but I don't know when I can ask that related to his amendment.
Go ahead.
So I think I just want to make sure I understand the intent. Is the idea that, you know, if we have, is the idea that we revisit it and we end it at that date if we feel like it's no longer needed? And then if we do feel like it's needed, we extend it for another interval of time? Like, or is it if we don't act?
It sounds to me that if we don't act, it expires then. So we have to take action on that honor before that date to make it continue.
Okay, so similar to the way the the governor had done his executive orders where he'd have to re-up it.
That's the intention.
That's the intention. Okay, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, the intention to basically give some kind of window to the public and and a little bit more time for us and the public to be prepared if it's still in effect. And I would go with the twenty second, although if a colleague has an idea that it should be the two weeks prior, I'm open to that also. But to give a little, a little window, larger window, I would go with the twenty second for my amendment.
We'll take the motion.
Collectively, it will be on us to decide.
Do we have a second to that motion? I will second the motion. So we have, we have a motion and a second.
So moved? Do we move it?
So the councilman, the deputy mayor moved it and I seconded it.
Okay.
So it's moved in second and do we have discussion on the amendment? This is not on the item itself, discussion on the amendment.
Can you just, now that we know the intent, can you just put it together in like one sentence so we can?
Township Attorney?
No, I think it would say that this resolution shall remain in effect until whatever the date is, I, councilman, unless rescinded by the township manager following seventy two hours notice to the council or by further resolution of the township council.
Got it.
So we are not discussing whether we want to pass this thing or not. We're discussing, should the thing that we vote on include that statement? That it automatically sunsets on February second? We have a motion from the deputy mayor and a second from the mayor. Any discussion on the amendment?
I've lost on that amendment. Explain that, Mr. Rayno.
The resolution will terminate on whatever the date is, and I apologize that we're talking about the twenty second, which would be the second meeting in February, correct?
Yes.
February, unless rescinded earlier by the township manager or by the council.
Or or we, if we, we could also vote to extend it before then. But it goes away, if we do nothing, it goes away on February twenty second.
Correct.
So again, we're just talking about when this thing subset, sunsets. We're not talking about the main motion, which is mandate, correct?
Correct.
Okay, good enough.
Anyone, any other discussion on the amendment?
I don't want to play devil's advocate, Mayor, but what if we find out that the Omicron virus subsides in January and we're not going to revisit this to February?
Then we could, we can revisit it sooner.
Correct, because you can, council could always, and that's what it's either rescinded by the manager or further resolution of a council. So it'll automatically stop on that date unless you extend it, but you could always repeal it sooner.
Okay, I think. And I don't want to overly complicate things again, which is why I asked the intent. It's like I think it it seemed like the intent is that we should have some sort of check in, public check in to see where we are with things. Does this, do we need to continue this? And then we do need to continue it. So I think maybe to Councilwoman Francois's, maybe it's not, you know, the month and a half. Maybe it's a month and we check in and we're like, no, things are still terrible. We need to keep this or we don't need to keep this. And then if something happens in that interval that the seventy two hours allows the township manager to act, is that? I just want to make sure I'm understanding the intent of the amendment and making sure it's what everyone thinks.
Well, if I could speak about the motion, and I don't want to confuse this, but Councilwoman Francois, if you feel that we should make a point of readdressing it earlier, I'm fine with sunsetting at the end of January or the beginning of February because I think collectively, we need, that is changing, a lot of things are changing, and it's on us to revisit this with input from the public and notice. Look, I'm glad we're doing what we're doing tonight, and I don't think anybody in the public thinks we orchestrated this and all want to be here on the twenty eighth for the heck of it. So, you know, we're doing what we have to in a rush. But now I want to make sure that we readdress it. We may get rid of this in January, we may make it stronger. I don't know, but I'm, that's why I said I'm open to having the sunset be the end of January, beginning of February. I'm saying at the very latest, we need to to get into a conversation that involves a lot of facts and time and the public at, you know, at some point here. Because this is a mandate, this is a regulation, it is a law that affects a lot of businesses and a lot of people's lives. And hopefully, everybody will cooperate, but that's my intent. So Councilwoman Francois, if you want us to address it earlier, I'd happily change it or you can motion to change it earlier.
Councilwoman, excuse me.
I was just, you know, anybody.
Councilwoman Pruitt, do you want to suggest a different date?
Yes, what is the, what is the second meeting? In January, what was the date?
January twenty fifth.
I think we revisit this on the twenty fifth.
So Council, Deputy Mayor Vasanella, you made the motion. Do you accept that change to your motion?
I I am fine with amending it to be the last meeting in January.
And I was the one who seconded the motion. I accept that change. So the the motion is now the same, the amendment is now the same amendment to the motion, except the date is January twenty fifth. Councilman Chase, you have your hand up.
I think that's too soon. I think even the second meeting in February is probably too soon. I think we're really wishful that it will go down enough by that time for us to, for the restriction to terminate automatically. I think a public discussion, discussion by council at the second meeting in February would be fine. But I, I think a, an absolute sunset should be later than that because I won't be voting on it whichever way you kind of wind up doing it. But that's my opinion.
Mr. Mayor, I think that the issue here, I believe, and that's what Councilwoman Pruitt brought up, is that we need to have continuous check ins. So if we put something in this resolution to let people know that we're going to continuously check it with this resolution, then I think everybody will be good in terms of it being open ended, which is what it seems like it is right now. I think that's the concern.
And I think, you know, we can have a conversation about whether or not it sunsets on the, I guess, the second in January. I think the idea is that even if we do have it as a sunset, if we have to take action on that date and have a conversation and make a conscious decision to extend it again. So I think that's ultimately what I'm hoping to do is just, you know, if we keep re-upping it as we need, but we have a little bit more discretion. You know, if we're feeling like that's too long. But I definitely, I understand and obviously respect Councilman Dr. Chase, Professor Dr. Chase's point of view. But I think that was, that was my intent. And the, the coming back at the end of January and taking a look at everything because everything's moving so fast and we have to be nimble and flexible. Maybe the answer is we just re-up it again. But I think coming back to the table is what I was trying to get at.
Councilman Embarrasson. You muted.
Sorry, thank you, Mayor. I think I agree with Dr. Chase's comments. We have the ability to end this earlier. So I, I think it's it's a good practice to watch. And if we need to have a conversation to end it earlier, we can always do that at the first meeting of January or the second meeting of January or first week of February. So I, I think let's give it a sixty day window. I think Councilman Vasanella's initial proposal of sixty days is good. And be, I think that a solution has the provision to end it early. So I suggest that we think about that carefully as Councilman Chase suggested. And, you know, let's make this easy. And we have the flexibility to act before that if we needed to. Thank you, Mayor.
And since it was my motion, I'm just going to throw out one last item, one last aspect, Councilwoman Pruitt and anyone else who's spoken. I don't mean to sound cliche about it, but how about if we split the difference and make it the second meeting in February? That's a reasonable window. We'll get data from January, we'll get data from the end of the calendar year. And hopefully, things will be moving, hopefully, in a better direction. Could be worse.
Councilman Vasanella has amended, Councilman Vasanella has amended his amended amendment.
Well, I just want to make sure, do you mean the first meeting in February, Councilman? Is that what you meant?
I initially was the second, but after the conversation, I'm saying the first meeting in February, which is the eighth?
Yes.
Eight, correct.
So the mover has changed it to the eighth. I was the seconder, I accept that. So the motion is now that we revisit this basically on the eighth, it sunsets if we don't do anything.
Trying to find compromise, I'm good with that.
Any other comments? Don't feel obligated. Okay, so we are now going to vote on the motion to amend. We are not voting on the motion itself. This amendment adds a sunshine day, a sunset date of February eighth. If we do nothing, this go, the resolution to mandate masks goes away, should we pass it? Or we can do something before that to change the fate of the resolution. A yes means it, we are putting in a sunset date. A no means there is no sunset date. Madam Clerk.
Councilman Embarrasson?
Yes.
Councilman Chase?
No.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Onijaka?
Councilman, we couldn't hear you. Councilman Onijaka.
Oh, God, this is my, yes.
Councilwoman Pruitt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
Yes.
Okay. Councilman, did you have any, Deputy Mayor, did you have any other amendments?
No, Mayor, no, did not.
Is there any other discussion? So we are now voting on the item itself with the amendment of the sunset clause at, on February 8th.
Is this where I get my second bite?
Well, I asked if there was any other discussion, but yes, you can, you can discuss.
This mandate is not working for me. Recommendation would work for me. Something along those lines, but as it stands now, it's a mandate. If stores want to allow you to come in, fine. That's on them. If they feel that that personal person feels like they can go to a ballgame without a mask and they let them in. As I said, 29, 28,000 dead here in St. Louis, Jersey, if you hadn't gotten the hit by now, when you gonna get the hit? I think everyone should, should be responsible. But if you made this a recommendation, I'm all with you. Mandate, can't do it.
Any other comments? Councilwoman Pruitt?
Apologies. I know I don't really talk as much ever in council meetings, but just, just because Councilman and Barson had said similar language, like this is a recommendation. Councilman Wright, you know, said he prefer this being a recommendation versus a mandate. You know, I think, you know, just some clarification maybe from the township attorney about, you know, we're referring this, we're calling this a mandate in, in a resolution versus, you know, a recommendation. But like, is it a mandate in the sense that maybe we all think of a mandate? Or is it actually just a recommend, a strong recommendation? And we're using mandate, it's just kind of an interchangeable word. I don't, I hope that makes sense.
No, I think it's worded as a mandate.
Okay, I just want to, because I think, you know, I think to perhaps Councilman Wright's point of just the mandate has enforcement teeth versus a recommendation. I think that maybe that's where some of his pause is. I can't speak for him. So I just wanted to, I just want to just have a clarification moment, that mandate means mandate and not recommendation.
So I will make the comment that wearing masks is much about protecting the people around you, not just protecting yourself. It is painful for me to do this. I have equivocated about it a long time, even though I know what the science was. But I, it comes down to, we are asking what I think is a relatively easy thing to do to help your fellow citizens. That's what this is about. Anyone else?
But, Mr. Mayor, I, I want to make sure that I'm on record stating that.
You're breaking record, Mr. Wright.
Excuse me?
Go ahead, Mr. Wright. I'm sorry I interrupted you.
I want to go on record saying that I believe in wearing a mask. I believe that everyone should wear a double mask. I believe everyone should have their COVID injection. I believe everything that stops this scourge from moving from person to person to person. But again, recommendation I could go with, mandate, I can't do it. Please call, call for that vote.
Any other comments? Madam Clerk. This is a vote on the resolution.
Councilman Embarrasson?
Yes.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pruitt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Eugene?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
No.
The resolution passes. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Moved in second and all in favor of adjourning, say aye.
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 Close, say nay. We are adjourned. We're doing our best to keep you well, Franklin. Good night.
Good night. Be safe. Happy New Year.